Good evening. This is the September 22nd, 2021, meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. And we welcome everybody that may be watching this and we are going to get started. Let's start with roll call. This is Lynn Tracy. I'm the chair. Carol, you want to go next?
Yeah, Carol Stephan here.
Mark?
Mark Silverman here.
Judy?
Judy Jordan here.
Okay, so we are only absent one commissioner at this point, but we do have a quorum, so we will continue. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I don't see Marty. I see a square for him, but...
Marty, are you there?
DCTV. I see everybody else, but...
No, I don't believe Marty's on. Mark, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Hand over heart. Ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God. It is with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we do have an agenda tonight. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
I so move.
Second?
I'll say.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay. Any announcements or anybody have any announcements tonight they'd like to make? Okay, any introductions? I don't believe we already went through that with you, Mark, a couple of weeks ago, so, or the last couple of meetings. Do we have any community members that have asked to speak, Tom?
Well, we haven't received any correspondence. I'm going to see if I can pull up participants and I'm not seeing anybody who's raised a hand, so no, this would be opportunity for persons that would want to address the commission about any manner that would come under the purview of the commission, but not on tonight's agenda, just to clarify.
Yes, thank you. All right. Unless we have a hand, I don't see any hands up, so.
We don't have any.
Okay, so we'll move along to the approval of the minutes of June 2nd, 2021. There does need to be a correction. I was present. I ran that meeting. So that's the one correction that needs.
Oh, that is?
Yeah, I was there. I even double-checked myself to make sure.
I thought we already made that correction, but maybe it didn't get done.
I don't know, but yes, I think we were all on that night. Anyway, so.
We'll make that correction.
I'll make that correction.
Any other comments on the meeting minutes, commissioners? Anybody else notice something that needs to be corrected? Okay, if not, somebody want a second acceptance of the motions with that correction?
I'll second.
Or make the motion, actually.
Yeah.
That was mine.
I thought maybe I missed that.
No, that was my bad. You want to make the motion, Mark, and then we'll have somebody else second it.
I move that we approve the minutes for what, June 2nd?
Second. Okay, thank you, Judy.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes are accepted. New Business is the report on the National Velvet Barn site. Can't wait to hear this.
Okay, bear with me for a second while I bring it up here. Okay. All right, so we wanted to give you an update on the National Velvet Barn. I believe the last meeting we mentioned, we had mentioned that we had done a site visit to the barn itself. So the National Velvet Barn, the reason that it's termed the National Velvet Barn is because of the movie National Velvet that was filmed in 1944. This is an image from the film itself. As you can see in the background, there's a barn. Both of these leading actors were in the film, therefore making it into an eligible national historical resource. Some background on the barn itself. This photo here on the right-hand side. This was taken from a site visit that Tom and I did in June. This kind of gives you a snapshot as to what the barn looks like today. This barn is located on 4515 Park and Trotta. It's on, it's part of the golf course. The barn itself was constructed in 1935 and it was surveyed in 2010 along with the rest of our properties within our jurisdiction. And the survey found this particular structure, there's actually two barns, found both particular structures to be eligible for historic So some of the things that went on during this meeting is we met with the property owner. We discussed whether or not he'd be interested in doing some renovations. The renovation discussion had to be put on hold until they completed some of the remodel work that they're currently doing on the clubhouse for the golf course. So once they've completed that scope of work, then they'll be open to discussing it again. He is open to listing the structure as historic in the future, so we're pretty excited about that. But the structures, both barns are in need of substantial repairs. As you can see on the right-hand side, there's some photos. I'm not sure how big these are on your screen, but as you can see, there's the tree that was, I'm sure, planted as a sapling that has decided to grow into the roof material itself. There are some posts that are in need of dire repair with some beams. This is part of the the exterior little patio cover. And then, as you can see on the bottom right-hand corner, this is a picture of inside one of the stalls. So it's got a lot of its bones, you know, pretty much preserved. And then, as you can see here, it has a new tenant, too. It's got a little barn owl living in there, so I thought you guys would enjoy that. But that's basically the update from our site visit back in June. Any questions?
So this is Carol. If we decide to add this on the list, do we, are we responsible to make sure it gets repaired before we added or as we go through adding it?
No. Looking forward, first of all, we would do a more complete type of survey, building condition assessment, at least, not, not to the level we're going to be telling you about for the Manson House, because that's city-owned. But in this case, we'd want to have the property on our record, obviously, but if we get all that done and it gets listed, then it's listed. We would be encouraging of renovation work done, of course, sensitively and in accordance with the guidelines and standards. But, and we can help get grant money to come in that would help that property owner accomplish things, that sort of thing, but we can't force it on that property owner. There are some resources, and that gets to another of our items that we're going to talk about later, that provide guidance as to structures that are deteriorating and how to address those situations. Although I'm not going to be discussing that particular topic. If we need to at a future time, we'll make that a future agenda item.
Great, okay. Any other questions?
Is there some idea of when the clubhouse is going to be done? Is there some timing? We, we know what's, we're looking at?
I know it's currently under progress as far as in the field, but I couldn't tell you when the finish date is. I'm not familiar with that one.
We're not talking years possibly. You're just, you're going to track it, I take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, once we know that that's done and they have their certificate of occupancy for that, we'll knock on the owner's door another time and see if we can have a follow-up meeting and see if the interest is still there and whether it's still at that same level or hopefully better, and then maybe we'll make some progress. I know when we did meet in that original meeting, there was a question asked by the owner about whether the city might be interested in participating as a somebody, an entity that would agree to use the facility if it could be rehabilitated in a way that would accommodate events. And our initial reaction was we didn't feel comfortable agreeing even in concept to something like that, because we didn't feel comfortable the city would take on any level of responsibility for this property or for a decision to rehab it, either one. We'd like to leave that with the property owner. So we will certainly discuss options and opportunities with the owner and with the premise that the owner's taking on everything, you know, as maybe accomplished for their benefit. But adaptive reuse is virtually an automatic, because it's already been adapted to other uses. The property had been used for a big chunk of that barn, the bigger barn, was used as offices for an engineering company for years. So there is almost no integrity remaining on the interior. It would be the exterior that would be the focus, as with a lot of, you know, like the Manson House.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Any other, Mark?
Well, I was just going to say, if, you know, if, if the owner wanted to use it as, as an entertainment building or whatever, how would you get the people out there? It's sitting on the 14th grade.
Well, that, that would all be determined at such time where you'd have to look at the site.
Yeah.
Look at how to do that, where you'd deal accommodate people with parking and whatever. But that is the only idea I've heard from that property owner so far. Right now, they're using it as their maintenance.
Right.
Facilities.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, great. Thank you for that, Teal and Tom. It's, it's kind of exciting. Let's, let's see where it goes.
It was a lot of fun to, to walk around and take a good look. There were some parts that were a little, made you nervous.
Yeah.
Inside.
And where there's one L, there's more than one L, by the way, Teal.
I'm aware of that.
You saw the one, and that was pretty exciting.
That's very exciting, very exciting. Yay. Okay, let's move on to the Manson House, Manson House.
Okay, let me bring that up really quick.
I'm going to share a screen here again.
Yep. Okay, so we wanted to give you an update on the Manson House, because we had hinted towards it last meeting, so we thought we'd give you an update on this. So here's some background. The locally designated historic Manson House was originally constructed in 1903. In 2010, a group called Historic Resources Group created a document and submitted it to the Community Development Department called a Historic Structures Report. This report included inspections and an assessment of the property itself. All of the things that are within this report are the following. It highlighted significance of the historic resource, so it gave us a historical background of the structure itself. It kind of walked us through time. A little summary of it, anyway. It documented the character-defining spaces and features. It assessed the conditions observed at the time, which was in 2010. It recommended appropriate repairs and treatments based on those assessments. And then it provided a preliminary budget itemized for each recommended repair or treatment. The budget that they prepared in 2010 to do all of the recommended repairs and treatments came to a total of $342,000 and, and 619, sorry, I said that wrong. Basically, $342,000. These are the substantial issues that were brought forward in the report itself. Chimney, foundation, water intrusion, interior ceiling plaster, joists, beams, the electrical system, and accessibility.
Now, could we back up just a minute, Teal? For example, when it says chimney, it's not like painting the chimney or just putting in a little more mortar. It basically has to be reconstructed. And for the most part, everything on this list falls into that category. All right.
Here is a little snapshot for you of what the chimney looks like today. We went out to site last week, I believe, and took a few photos for you guys to kind of give you a snapshot of what it looks like today. In the center, you can see that the chimney is coming away from the house a little bit there. In the, the photo to the right, you can see that there are cinder blocks on top of a mesh type of material, and that's due to the fact that there isn't a cap on the chimney itself, so it's to prevent water penetration. And then, as you can see from the photo on the left, it needs a little more TLC from the outside. Here is a snapshot of the foundation. The one in the center is a little bit blurry. It was taken from the report itself. So as you can see, it's highlighting both the foundation and the water intrusion through the foundation. It's taken from the inside of the crawl space, so it's underneath the house. The one on the left shows you how some of the mortar is starting to come away from the, the blocks itself. And then to the right, the photo on the right there, you can kind of see how the house and the foundation, the connection point there is starting to wither away.
Now, I'd like to point out here also that this stone foundation you're seeing here, this is under the original, because the house itself isn't all original. There was an addition that happened some years later. I don't remember the year, maybe it's the 30s or something like that, but in the 1903 house is the one that has the stacked stone foundation components that you see in these photos. Those are unreinforced. They have mortar, but there's no rebar or anything like that. So foundation work to make this a safe and habitable structure is more involved than just tuck pointing these stones quite a bit more.
And there was a structural assessment done on it in 2010. And the photo you see in the center is what they assessed early on. So we're just looking to see in the updated report additionally what other repairs need to be made from that snapshot point on the foundation. Okay, so the Historic Resources Group, what they're proposing on doing, or what they need to do, is they need to come out and do a site evaluation. They are going to do a structural, updated structural assessment and an updated construction budget. Now, the price for the budget, as we can recall, was about $342,000. That was back in 2010. So as you can imagine, with the rise in construction materials recently, that is going to increase exponentially. But we won't know exactly what that number is until they do an updated report. And the cost for the report, what they gave us for an approximate quote would be around $10,800. Okay, so where are we at in this process? So we know that the building is in poor condition and it clearly needs major repair work. And the sooner we get to it, the better. The first step in the process will be to prepare a current and comprehensive inspection and conditions assessment report. This will give us a preliminary construction estimate so that we have a way of moving forward with those repairs. Staff has informed the tenants and Headwaters Corner Board of our intent to go to council. We informed them on the September 20th on Monday. So the next step for us would be to inform city council and request authorization from city council to update the Manson's Historic Structures Report and request the estimated cost of $10,000, well, $10,800. And that's it.
Right, so just to add one small clarification as to buy that preliminary budget for the construction, once we would have that, we would be able to then go out and seek bids from qualified contractors who aren't just qualified in residential construction and rehab work, but qualified in doing that kind of work on historic structures in accordance with the secretary's standards. So we would put out an RFP that makes all that very clear as to what would be a qualifying response to bid, and then we'd have bids and we'd have a budget that would allow us to evaluate those bids. So that's why, one of the reasons we want to get all this done, so we know what has to be done. If we can get that, we get the council to approve us to proceed, we get that work done, the, the report, and then we can go ahead and get bids. That's where we hope to go. And then, once we would have bids, then we'd have to go back to council to get approval to proceed with the construction, to have them accept the bid and allocate the funds. When the capital improvement program comes up as part of the annual budget in 2022, if all this timing works, we can put a request in to include the funding in the budget. So that's how all these pieces fit together, or hopefully will fit together.
So, so this is Carol Stephan. I have a question. So we're assuming, and I'm, I'm all for getting the report done, but we're assuming if we get the report, then we will be somewhat successful at some point in getting funding to fix it.
I hope so.
Hard, hard to know at this point, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're just talking about what can occur. What we want to try to do is get a soup tonight, I mean, everything on paper to do every repair that really should be done. Some are going to be more important than others. A roof, for example, usually is at the top of a repair list, because it's fundamental to a structure and a foundation likewise. So we're going to have the big-ticket items like that high on the list. There may be other things that are going to be lower. And if the council would have a desire to do something less thorough and at a lower cost, we would be able to adjust the construction list of, of items and adjust the project budget accordingly and then go out for bids that way. But that's down the road. We first have to get this report done.
What happened in 2010? Was any work done that was recommended in that report? And, and why weren't things done then? Because now we've got another 11 years and there's got to be more water damage under there, I imagine, and...
I don't know. It's not like I can go back and check records that would give me answers, but Teal and I discussed it relative to what was going on in terms of our general society.
Yeah.
In, in America in particular and locally. And if you remember the timing, right, the, the recession, we were in the deep throngs of that in 2010. And many people don't realize that government entities were behind private sector on the fiscal impacts by about two years. So the recession started 2008. It started hitting governmental entities really hard in 2010. So I know budgetarily, and I can remember it because I, I was working here, the city budget was being trimmed substantially in 2010 and 2011. So even if this was something that was at least being talked about at that, and leading up to that or whatever, I'm sure that in itself could be a reason why it never made it. I believe they did some, at least some roof repair work, maybe. It looks like. The roof looks pretty good.
It was.
And I also know, because Carol's brought this up, that some painting work was done about three or four years ago as a scout project. So cosmetically, a passerby would not come away with the opinion or an understanding of how how unfortunately this building really has deteriorated. It looks better than it, than it really is. It's sort of like a car. They had a lot of patchwork and then was painted.
All right, thanks. Other questions, Mark?
Tom, I was wondering, that foundation looks pretty rough. Do you think they'd have to lift the house to repair it?
I'm confident they'd have to lift least sections at a time. It's not just the, the actual stone masonry foundation, but the floor joists and the sill plates are in terrible shape as well. They pretty much are going to have to replace almost all of that.
Really?
So you, you can't just lift the house, fix the masonry at it back down again, because the, the underpinning mason, or carpentry, right?
Right.
That provide the other key aspect of the foundation, the house itself needs to mount to the foundation at that place. That's all rotting away.
And then I was going to say, do you think we could get any community volunteer workers to, to help, like Habitat for Humanity or something?
I don't. We can explore that when we get to that point. I don't know that Habitat for Humanity would be an actual, to be specific to that one, because they focus on, on housing. I mean, this is a house, but it's not going to be a house for a family.
Right.
But Historic Preservation Grants is going to be something we're going to be looking into. We're going to try to find funding options that would help us get the work done rather than just on our own local resources.
Okay, thank you.
And volunteers, sure, I would think, I would hope so. A general contractor is going to have a big role in deciding whether they want volunteers as part of the workforce. There could be insurance type issues or liability of other types. We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Might, might help with the bottom line. I don't know how much.
Well, it always does.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Okay, thank you, guys. Well, we'll cross our fingers and see what comes up. All right, item number four, training of the Historic Preservation Commission members, the camp program.
All right.
Well, camp, yep, that'll be something, the camp itself, that program, Teal will comment on, but I'd like to start on this one and Teal will share a screen again. We've got a short bit of information to show you visually. So I've got a repeat of the Manson House photos, because we love that house. But let's go ahead and all I'm going to do is remind the commission members contracted COVID.
Tom, you're cutting, Tom, you're cutting in and out.
Oh.
Can you repeat that again?
Okay. In this post, in this protracted code where we're still having to do the innings and we're having to get things done through the internet instead of going to conferences and seminars and the usual way that information change and training is occurring, we're trying to find more and more opportunities for the commission members and for staff through the internet and through agencies and organizations that are making offerings through that channel. So I wanted to share with you some things that we're finding that hopefully the commission members will be able to take advantage of. Okay, so Teal? Next slide. Okay, so the first and most important thing I would like to remind the commission members of is the State Office of Historic Preservation, our ship, what's called a shippo. And I wanted to point out that they have their own tutorial on the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. That will be, if, if you were to take that, I think you're going to find out it's going to be a bit redundant to the one I already provided the commission members as Module One earlier this year. But that is certainly available, so I wanted to point that out. There are also in the website for the shippo links to various National Park Service resources. Now, anybody who may be wondering, well, why would the National Park Service have historic preservation resources? And sometimes I'm saying these things, not because you, the commissioners are wondering that, but members of the public might. Um, the National Park Service is the federal entity that manages historic preservation matters on, they're the they're the subset under the, the Department of the Interior. And it's their responsibility to oversee historic preservation programs at the federal level. So here are a couple of examples. These two briefs in particular, I pulled out because they have relevance to things that our commission would likely be concerned about. And one of them is architectural character, identifying the visual aspects of historic buildings as an aid to preserving their character. And if you think about what we were just talking about in the two previous items, visual aspects and, and what is the architecture character of those certainly come to mind. And if you reflect back on my training module number two, of course, we covered a great deal of that. Now, technical brief number 14 talks specifically about exterior additions to historic buildings and the preservation concerns for that. So there are a couple of very specific technical documents that are accessible from the shippo. There are also links to training seminars that are downloadable from the California Preservation Foundation, and there's the link here. By the way, we're going to provide all of this to you. I think we've already made these, this presentation available to the commission members. We're going to include a even more substantial list of resources like this with the web links to the commission members via email. So that you would be able to just click and, and find your way to some of these, okay? But the main thing I'll encourage you to do is just explore, once you're on the shippo site or, or, and the National Park Service site. It's, it's fascinating to see what they have, and they have some great resources. I'm also going to point out that, I mean, here's a item that they included specific to preservation commissions and governing law. Whatever member, every basically commission member needs to know about law and historic preservation. You can also access that from the shippo's website. This is just a sampling, I'll remind you, there's a lot more than just this. Next slide. So there's an interpretation of the Secretary of Interior's standards from shippo. They offer a free e-learning course for that. It's designed for preservation commissioners as well as staff and officials. And that is a self-paced course that you can do on your own. It includes these components here. And when you add up those time estimates, you're basically talking about maybe an hour and 15 minutes. It is a little different than how I provided some of this information, but again, there is going to be some repetition. But it wouldn't hurt if any of you would want to take that to, to do that. I'm sure it'd be very informative. Next slide. Now, I mentioned the National Park Service and their technical preservation services is really their, their branch that does these uh, training-based things, including those technical um, documents I mentioned earlier. And we're going to provide you the link to that. They have quite a few options that are available to you there for in-depth training. Next. Here's one of the examples, this is really cool. This one is something that you start this and you do this whole walkthrough for historic buildings to learn how to identify visual character type stuff. So it's an interactive, highly visual way to get a, a good understanding of historic preservation and what makes a, a building historic. So I'd recommend this one as something that would be fun and highly informative. Next. I think I've got one more. Oh, and there, there's the, like, oh, I guess that's the last one. I didn't want to cover everything. I think it's far more fun and interesting for you to actually explore those two organizations' websites and see how they offer so many options, much more than they did when I first was looking for this stuff about two years ago.
Hey, Tom and commissioners, I actually have to leave the meeting. I'm, unfortunately, I have a an obligation right now, but um, could you tell us how many hours we need to have of training before I leave?
It's only one required training. I believe it's an hour, but I can check on that.
Yeah, it's not a whole lot. I think you have to have an hour, as she said. Um, I think the shippo would like to see us do a little more than that, and we've strived for that, that's why we did at least two modules.
Yeah.
In the previous, in the fiscal year that's now ending. Um, I'd like to try to do that, but I mean, I'm just encouraging you as time would allow, I tried to find things to point you to that you can do on your own time as opposed to a live webinar that might be at a time of day and a day of the week that is inconvenient. Yeah, all right. Well, thank you, Carol, you've, you've gotten through most of everything. We're just going to cover that one thing, camp. Teal's gonna.
I wish I could stay.
And then we've got an item five.
My.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, Carol, take care.
Okay, bear with me if I glitch a little bit here. And so there is one other training opportunity that was brought to our.
Uh-oh, she paused.
Attention, um, it's the one that's referenced on your agenda. It's called a CAM, which stands for Commission Assistance and Mentoring Program. And this is actually pretty cool. I looked into this a little bit. I believe there are three or four webinars, and those three or four webinars are over two days. So um, we did discover that the first one is from noon to four, I believe. So it is during work hours, which I, I know that it can be hard for some of our commissioners. And she did, the, the contact at shippo did say that they would be downloadable. So in case you guys wanted to, to go that avenue. Um, she did though mention that they would prefer the commissioners to attend the live webinars because it relies on people in the training seminar to answer questions and to talk, so I thought it was kind of cool. Um, I will also be including that on the email if you guys choose to do that. Uh, the dates and times are, I, I don't think they're solidified for the last three. The first one has passed, actually, it's in the beginning of October, we're not there yet. Um, but then the other three are, are coming up. So I don't believe, I think it's to be determined as far as time and date on those. So I will send all that information with what Tom highlighted as the other training opportunities.
Yeah, so a couple of things. First of all, because Teal did kind of click in and out there, a key point she was trying to make at one of those times is that while they encourage participants to do it live, because it does have the capacity to have exchange between the moderators and presenters with the attending people, they also are going to make it available, it's downloadable at whatever time and day is convenient for others. So you wouldn't have to feel like you'd have to log in and participate on the day and time that they're doing it live. I didn't want anybody thinking, well, that's the only time I can do it, that's inconvenient. Okay, there will be, in essence, rebroadcasting of them at your own convenience. Now, the other thing I wanted to comment on, in case everybody now is going, oh my God, this is so much stuff. Well, consider going into a restaurant and you've got a four-page menu and a lot of options, you're still going to have one meal. So we're just giving you a menu. You guys figure out what you may want to do as your time and allows and learn what you want to learn. We'd like for you to report back whatever you've done, so we can include that in our report to shippo. But one meal at a time, I don't want anybody getting overstuffed. Okay?
I do want.
Anything else on camp?
I also want to mention one last thing. I know that Tom mentioned that we include it in
Lost her again.
Our report for the fiscal year. Yeah, there we go. I know you said that we include it for the fiscal year. I need to know the title and the exact training you did, and I have to put it in the report.
Now, there's no, we're way ahead.
So it's important. It's important for us to know that, that title of the training.
Our next report is not due until April of 2022. So we got plenty of time for anybody who does any training between now and then for you to write up whatever you've done, send us an email with that information. Okay? So that means you have plenty of time to eat your training meal also. Okay, any questions?
Anybody got any questions? Okay, well, speaking of eating, the, is that why you did ask the next agenda item? It's on a re- potential restaurant for Old Town? Good segue, Tom.
That, we just wanted to give you a heads up that we did receive an inquiry from um, an individual who was investigating the Banzi sushi location for a new and different restaurant there. Now, I don't want to confuse anybody, that structure is not designated historic, it's not eligible for designation. However, it is on the same property, the lot that includes the Kramer um, store building, which is eligible. And because of the proximity physically and the fact they're on the actual same property and there's shared parking and all of that sort of thing. We just wanted to give you a heads up, and, and it's in Old Town. And the HBC services are Old Town Coalition. So at a minimum, if this were to come in as an actual project at some future date, it's going to show up on an agenda for the HPC, at least as the Old Town Coalition. And hopefully not wearing your Historic Preservation Commission hat, because we would hope there wouldn't be any concern relative to the Kramer store. But we just wanted to give you the heads up. We don't get inquiries of this type about anything in that vicinity very often, other than a tenant change for spaces within the existing buildings. Um, the last thing that happened out there in that vicinity that was substantial was Pedlar Spore, right? And to the south of that property, the, the Kenyon Creek Apartments, of course. But those have been the only two substantial projects. If somebody wants to reuse that building for something new, they're going to have to do quite a bit of changes to it to bring it up to code. And this inquiry party was advised of that. Now, it could be we scared them away, I don't know. But um, I just wanted to give you the heads up, that was all.
Thanks. Mark? You're muted, Mark, you gotta unmute yourself. There you go.
Uh, sorry, is the, is the sushi place going out of business?
I, I don't know anything about how the sushi place is, it could be different things can generate these kinds of inquiries. It can be the landlord inviting people to look at it because a lease term is up, and rather than just sign up a new lease, they're going to test the waters and see who else might want to enter into something. Um, it could also be that the restaurant owner, even though they may have lease term left, they like to hang it up and see if someone else assumed the lease. It could be different mechanisms that would trigger that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Future agenda items.
The. Okay, so.
Are you handling these? Yeah.
Yeah, so looking ahead, we have, uh, we want to give you a, an update when we meet next on where we stand relative, the goals are outlined for the current fiscal year that ends September 30. So with the current, remember, we're on a federal fiscal year when we're talking historic preservation, because it all trickles down from the Department of Interior. So we'll want to, at your next meeting, give you a report on how we stand relative to the goals that were outlined for that fiscal year. We're also going to invite the commission, of course, to have a discussion with staff on the goals for the fiscal year, which as of today is the quote next fiscal year, but when we meet again, we'll be in that fiscal year. So at that time, we'll call it the current, but it'll be the 2021 dash 2022 fiscal year. So we'll set the goals for that. So those for sure will know at that meeting. There's a date that, for adjournment that we anticipate would be January 5th. And if there's no reason for the commission to meet beforehand, that's when we'd bring it forward to the commission. Now, there's always a possibility the commission would have to meet beforehand if there's a project, so just sign permits or who knows what. They would come forward and we have to meet permit streamlining act, in which case we convene the commission before then. But they will be at the next meeting.
So I didn't quite follow that, Tom, I'm sorry. We're doing the October 6th meeting, what, what were you saying about the January 5th?
Well, October 6th, we're going to cancel because that's only about a week away or two weeks.
Okay, now I'm with you, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
So we're going to ask the commission to please adjourn to January 5th, that's just Wednesday, January 5th in 2022, as you, what would be your next regular meeting. The only thing that would cause the items I just outlined to come before the commission before then would be if we have some reason to convene the commission at a special meeting. We're not anticipating one, I'm not aware of anything that would, that's on the horizon. But I always want to remind the commission that because you meet quarterly, there is a distinct possibility anyway, that we're going to have to convene the group more urgently than three months from now. So I always like to remind you, and Mark's not been on the commission a super long time, and maybe he wasn't aware of that, but so I just want to make sure everybody's aware. Every once in a while, we're going to say, hey, we need you guys to meet. And it's going to be because the state requires us to make decisions on projects very quickly.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Um, do we need a motion to change the meeting date or?
No, no, you'll just, that's just for you to announce the adjournment date and time.
Okay.
Which, if the group would rather have it at six o'clock, you'll make that known now.
Right, I, um, and we don't, do we anticipate we will still be using uh, virtual?
I think we should for now.
Okay. So how do others feel about doing six o'clock for that meeting? Is everybody good with the earlier time?
As long as it's on Zoom, yes.
Yeah, I know, that, I agree, as long as we're on Zoom, the six o'clock is, works, the seven works better when there's traffic, we have to get to City Hall.
Makes sense.
Yeah, uh, Mark, does that work for you?
Yeah, yeah, so I just, real quick, it would be on January 5th.
Yes.
Okay. How often change? It's just the regular time, it's, it's the first Wednesday, every three months.
Okay.
It's our regular time, but I don't think we ever meet there. And this time, it would be so close to the New Year's, we probably.
Yeah, that works, six o'clock works good for me.
Yeah, so shall we agree to that then, Tom? We'll do six o'clock.
Sure, I mean, you're getting, it's a matter of getting a consensus, you don't have to get a vote.
Okay, all right.
And then as chair, you can just announce that that's the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Um, commissioners, anything else you want to bring up at this meeting? Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Just, just wondering if anything was going on with the renovation on Calabasas Road there.
On Calabasas Road, or do you mean?
We, we talked about it last month with the fencing and the sidewalks and the street repairs and.
Old Town.
Old Town.
Oh, Old Town, okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I don't have a specific update, I know that they're still working on, I, I guess I'll call it the details of getting construction bids. You know, they have to get the, the bid documents put together before they can put it out to bid. You know, they have to get the, the bid documents put together before they can put it out to bid. Right? So there are detailed construction engineering plans that still have to be completed and their bid documents before they'd be able to put it out to bid. But um, I believe they've got the go-ahead from city council to at least finish that part. Um, I'm not able to provide you anything more specific than that.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody have anything else? No? Okay, with that, thank you, Tom and Teal so much, as always, for the thorough briefings and the slides. It's great. Um, so I will adjourn the meeting uh, until January 5th, 2022 at 6:00 PM and we'll adjourn at 6:53 PM.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.